Good morning. I'd like to call to order the July 8, 2021, meeting of the RTC Board of Commissioners. And I'd like to point out that we have Mayor Pro Tem Stavros Anthony joining us by phone today, and the rest of the board members are present in the Clark County Commission chambers. With that, MJ, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairwoman and Members of the Commission. Your first item is to conduct your first citizens' participation period.
Thank you, MJ. This is the first time set aside for public comment. This is a time limited to comments on items included on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on a posted agenda item now is your opportunity. Please come forward to the microphone to provide your comments and to state your name for the record. We do have one card here, and it's Lisa de Marenge.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's an honor to be here today. We started Tango Car over two and a half years ago with a license to provide on-demand service and a goal to provide freedom to the paratransit community. We are grateful for RTC for embracing our mission and their willingness to pilot this innovative initiative. Our motivation started with the thought, if the traveling public can hail a ride via a smartphone, why shouldn't a traveler in a wheelchair be able to do the same? And if the traveler doesn't own a smartphone, why shouldn't they be able to call the RTC to book a ride on demand? That led us to make a significant investment to realize our dream in the community we call home. People like Mark Baker, who hails a ride to work each day, said, "The Tango service allows paratransit riders flexibility and freedom to schedule activities outside the scope of a stringent timeframe. This freedom affords a great sense of involvement within the community and a great sense of normalcy within our daily lives." End quote. When we launched in November of 2018, we turned on our software, hovered over the map on our dispatch screen, and in came our first ride. It was from Shane Puller, who was kind enough to join me here today and allow me to share his words with you. His quote begins, "I've been with Tango from its inception, literally day one. To put it simply, this service has changed my life." Now, of course, the heart of any company like this is its staff. All of Tango's employees are quite friendly and professional. Ninety percent of my rides arrive before the scheduled pickup time. However, the real secret sauce is in the ability to schedule same-day rides. I'm a freelance film editor. My schedule changes by day, if not by hour. The flexibility Tango offers me cannot be overstated. The only small recommendation I would make, if I could, is an option to purchase a monthly plan with more rides. Forty rides per month sounds like a lot, and don't get me wrong, I'm extremely grateful. However, for clients working full-time, the allotment tends to get used up. In closing, may I offer my sincere thanks to everyone in the creation of Tango, and I highly recommend it becoming a permanent service within RTC. Thank you. End quote. On behalf of the team at Tango Car, we would be grateful for the opportunity to continue to provide on-demand paratransit and shared ride service to the community, and we hope you will Tango with us well into the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close public comment.
Thank you, Chairwoman. The next item is to approve the agenda. The agenda is in order and ready for your approval.
Are there any questions or comments about the agenda, or can I have a motion to approve the agenda? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes.
All opposed, say nay, and that motion carries.
Thank you, Chairwoman. The next item, Agenda 3, is to elect a chair and vice chair.
Hi, Mayor Goodman here. I would like to make a motion to have Mayor Deborah March continue on as main chair and to have Justice Jones, Commissioner Jones, continue on as vice chair.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Is there anyone else wishing to make a motion? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say nay, and that motion carries.
And the next item is to receive the CE report, and today we are going to begin with homage to a wonderful person. I'd like to take a moment to honor a dear friend to the RTC. Last month, Southern Nevada lost a visionary and passionate advocate for transportation and strategic planning. Dr. Robert Lang did so much to advance the conversation around regionalism, Southern Nevada Strong, and public transit. As the Director of Brookings Mountain West and the Lindsay Institute at UNLV, the RTC will memorialize Dr. Lang and his great work with a plaque at the UNLV Transit Center later this month.
I'd just like to say a few words. It was really a pleasure knowing Dr. Lang, and he was a good friend to all of us in Southern Nevada and truly a champion and a leader, and someone who has made a difference that will forever impact the quality of our community. He stood up for the medical school. He, I love him, wouldn't be here if he hadn't championed that. Southern Nevada Strong, he was a strong partner of ours and actually helped us with the application process. Even with NDOT, an additional board position was added to the board to allow for another Southern Nevada representative to the board to create some equanimity on the board. There's so many things. I could go on and on and talk about the many things that he did to make a difference, and I think we need another Rob Lang. We need somebody in our community who pushes us and makes us look at things, whether it's education or quality community, but makes us be better at what we do. And so I'm blessed to have known him. Thank you.
You're welcome. He definitely made us smarter, and he made our community a better place to be.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just, just to echo what you're saying, after I got elected, our city council sat down at a think tank, of course headed out with Dr. Robert Lang, and the, I'll never forget this, the name of the presentation was, "Superman is not coming to save you." Superman is being the federal government. When, of course, the city of North Las Vegas was really close to losing its charter, you know, because there's no such thing as bankruptcy in the state of Nevada for cities. And it was Robert Lang and his team that, quite frankly, outlined the path out of receivership for the city of North Las Vegas. We wonder why North Las Vegas has become like a leader when it comes to the, a lot of the new industries that are coming to North Las Vegas. That was his vision. And, of course, you know, sometimes you've got to be smart enough to see that other people are giving you really good advice, and he charted a path forward for North Las Vegas. And for that, I know, just speaking for my city, we're going to always be indebted to him. And I'll be pushing a couple of developers to actually name a street in his honor, which is the very least, I think, that we can do, considering how much his leadership, his vision helped lead the way out for North Las Vegas. So, again, wherever he's at, thanks.
Absolutely. Anyone else wishing to comment? Well, thank you, MJ.
Okay. So, the next item in today's CE report is to receive two recognitions from our contractors. This is always the best part of the CE report. We get to recognize some really great, hard-working folks. First, we'd like to recognize Christine Lopes from Keolis, and Francis Julian is going to present to her in a video.
Thank you, MJ. What wonderful drivers we have today. We're here to celebrate Christine Lopez. Christine did an amazing job, just like a lot of our drivers are always doing. She was driving a route and saw an elderly woman without shoes in the middle of the route. She stopped her bus, got the elderly woman inside the vehicle, realized she didn't have ID, that she was lost and confused, called Metro, waited for Metro until they picked her up, and took good care of that woman. So, let's go and celebrate Ms. Lopez. Christine Lopez. Hi, I'm Francis from the RTC. I'm here to give you the Crystal Bus for your action with the elderly woman that you helped about a month ago. So, congratulations.
Woo! Thank you. I just want to thank my team. You know, they stood by me since day one. I want to just shed some light on this. I was glad I was there to be able to help her, you know. I think that's what we need, a little bit more compassion in a world full of hate, you know. You could be the light, too. Thanks.
Francis, is Christine here?
Christine?
Hey.
And next, we would like to recognize Andrew Nulashie, and Francis again is going to present to him.
Thank you, MJ. This morning, we were at the IBMF to celebrate Andrew Nulashie. Andrew is actually a cadet. He's helping other drivers to find their routes, and when he learned of the service change, actually went out of his way to go and see some of his customers that had used to have three transfers to go to work. So, a really long journey to tell them about the service changes and the new, much faster way they'll be getting with the new 220 and tropical road. So, let's go and surprise Andrew. Hi, Andrew?
Yeah.
Hi, Francis Julian from the RTC. How are you?
Good.
Good. I'm here to surprise you with a Crystal Bus for all the excellent marketing and customer service you did with our passenger with the service change.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, guys. Thank you, everyone. Can't see my big smile. It's like a second family here. I've always felt like that with everybody. Love what I do, love the people I work for, and I'm just having a really good time. I appreciate it.
And Andrew's here as well.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Congratulations to both. And, Chairwoman, this concludes your CE report. Thank you very much. Ms. Swallow?
Good morning. Good to be here. It's, I think I missed a couple. So, it's good to see you all again, and it was good. I rode the bus yesterday. I try to ride the bus on Wednesdays. That's my goal. And I love being able to see everybody on the bus and interact and just see how our community uses our transportation systems broadly. So, good to be here. I'm going to try and be brief. As normal, I'm going to start with safety. And numbers continue to trend up. As you can see, we are year-over-year up 32% from last year. In Clark County, we're up, we're also up. And I would say that we are up in Clark County in every major category that we're tracking, in pedestrian crashes and motorcycle crashes and bicyclists and scooter crashes and in unrestrained fatalities. We are, we are tracking higher than last year, and if you recall, last year was significantly higher over the year before. I did want to also note that in June, four bicyclists were killed on our roadways here in Clark County, whereas last year, at this point, no cyclists had lost their lives yet. And that is in addition to the 34 pedestrians who have lost their lives so far this year in Clark County on our roadways. We continue to see that the primary cause is impairment and, or causes are impairment and speeding. Those don't always go hand-in-hand, and I would just like to remind everyone, I don't care how much of a rush you are in, it is not worth your or somebody else's life and to take a minute and think about that and slow down. The one crash that I did want to mention this time was fortunately not a fatality, but it is a good example and acknowledgement of impairment and speeding. The driver was traveling at twice the posted speed limit and caused a multi-vehicle crash near the strip last month. The man at the wheel was driving a U-Haul truck on Harmon near Kovell Lane when his vehicle crossed into the westbound lanes. Witnesses told police the vehicle swerved into oncoming traffic to go around slower-moving traffic on Harmon. The U-Haul driver struck a Hyundai Elantra, causing the rear end of the truck to then hit a second car, or I guess a third car. Three occupants in the Hyundai were taken to UMC, one requiring emergency surgery. The U-Haul driver told the police he had taken drugs before the crash and was traveling 70 miles an hour in a 35 mile-an-hour zone. I know that we all say we don't do those things, and we're better than that. I also know that probably if I asked for a show of hands how many people speed, we probably all speed. And so, just be aware of that. Be aware of who's sharing the road with you and really take a minute to make sure that you and everyone around you can get to where they're going safely. All right. Legislative impacts, just wanted to let you know, we were, we were tracking, as your team at the RTC, we were tracking many bills, over 100 bills we were tracking. In the end, approximately 36, 36 had an impact, some impact on NDOT. None of them were particularly significant, other than those that we knew and we were, and we wanted. So, we were fortunate. Generally, the bills, as we mentioned, there were the four that we passed, including the one making a formal legislative committee out of our Nevada Executive Committee on Traffic Safety. It will now be a formal committee, and we're very excited to have that to help leverage that safety voice at the legislative level. Then, some other bills regarding greenhouse gas emissions, which we've been working on and helping lead at the statewide level. So, I'm very excited to start working on those bills that got passed. And then, the last slide I have today, and you'll see on the top, Henderson Bowl. You may have heard us call it Henderson Bowl before. We don't call it Henderson Bowl anymore, and so I'm just acknowledging it. We don't. You can actually see below in the logo, it is the Henderson Interchange. And we're talking about this today because we have a virtual and in-person public information meeting. The virtual meeting started a couple of days ago. The link is on the slide. You can see there. The in-person meeting, for anyone who wants to attend in person, will be on July 22 from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Henderson Lifeguard Arena, Center ICE Room. You can find the arena on 222 South Water Street. And again, the virtual part of the meeting will go through August 5. We are excited to start talking about this project, this critical project in Henderson, and get the feedback and information from the public as we start to navigate the process forward to improving this critical interchange. And that concludes my report.
Any questions or comments? I would just like to share that we're thrilled to see that interchange is receiving attention now. I think it's critical, especially with all the development and the things that are happening on the east side of Henderson and in the downtown Henderson area. And I'm delighted that you're going to be having the public input here fairly soon. I also wanted to just point out, too, as you know, Boulder Highway, I've brought that up a number of times, that it's been number one in road deaths for quite a while. And so, we're excited that we just received a grant, a federal grant, for $38 million to be able to make improvements to the Boulder Highway.
We were happy to help support that and congratulate you with the whoop-oo.
I want to know where the county was. Did we drop the ball on that one? Could I ask a question?
Sure.
I know, or at least I hope, there's going to be some infrastructure money coming. Is the state looking at how you can use some of that with our roadways down here?
We are closely tracking the infrastructure bill as it evolves, and it's been evolving and will continue to evolve. We're closely tracking and trying to weigh in as much as we can to ensure that we get more money statewide, and more money statewide means more money to Southern Nevada. So, we are, we're definitely working on it. And we also submitted, when we have the opportunity to submit appropriations requests, we have submitted or supported our local public agencies, so.
So, should we start proposing what we want to do with the money?
So, we have, actually, we have a prioritization process that we work through to ensure that all of the projects are prioritized in congruence with statewide goals that were determined in 2018 through a public information process. We also work closely with the RTC, who helps to prioritize the spending of the money here in Southern Nevada.
Thank you very much, Ms. Director. That was a really good, the first part is kind of depressing. And it just so happened, like, last night in North Las Vegas on one of our busiest intersections, I guess a fellow was 10 feet out of the crosswalk when he got struck and was pronounced dead at the scene just last night. You know, I'm very sorry to hear that. I'm very happy that the different agencies, the different municipalities, and of course NDOT, has done so much to begin to, well, we've been investing in safety and infrastructure for a long time, installing pedestrian bridges, putting in flashing lights. But yeah, it seems that despite, whether it's COVID or non-COVID, pre-COVID, now post-COVID, right, fatalities continue to rise. And I think the infrastructure that we need to invest in is, well, quite frankly, deals with changing cultural views on traffic. Literally, and probably, I'm sure other people have seen this, we have these flashing lights all over the place, and you'll see people not move 50 feet down the street to push the button to be in the crosswalk. I still have a picture of a person with a sheet over them, and they're literally in the shade of one of the pedestrian bridges that was built in North Las Vegas, intended to protect them. And this is with also NDOT putting in the safety barriers in the middle of the street so people, to try to discourage people from crossing. And her body is literally in the shadow of the pedestrian bridge because she couldn't be bothered to go ahead and use it. Now, I don't want, I'm not trying to blame victims here, right? But, and I do think we still have to, we do have to invest more in doing smart things, of course, to convince people to play it safe, especially as pedestrians. But I'm hoping that we maybe look at different ways to reach out to the community to change the, the hardest thing to do is to change the way people think. And we still have people who are using these instead of driving. They're texting. They're texting and walking. And again, you know, we have one horror story after another, but I just hope that we have more of a human investment with any money when it comes to investment. Because, again, we can go ahead and build more and more safety devices, and people will do their very best to go around these safety devices, to get past them, you know. And I know there's America and all that, right, and we have the freedom to walk wherever we want, but sometimes there's consequences that the rest of us wind up having to pay for.
You know, I appreciate that comment, and it's something that I am striving for at NDOT, for us to consider how we design the roads differently and better to ensure the safety of everyone. It's something that we've, I've had conversations with MJ. These are roadways that are designed with bikes and Peds in mind, designed for bikes and Peds instead of designed around them. Pedestrian bridges are designed for cars, not for pedestrians. Roads that are designed for bikes and Peds are safer for everyone. That said, if you ever see a stray dog on the road, every single car on that road will stop to avoid the stray dog. We don't do the same for people. That is why I start with safety. That is why I say the things I say about the fact that probably to a person in this room, we all speed. Maybe we only go five over. We all need to be thinking about how we, the operators of the vehicles, operate those vehicles to ensure that the people on the road, in or out of a vehicle, get to where they're going safely, regardless if they have access to a personal vehicle.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Director Swallow, for that very thoughtful presentation today. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. The next item on the agenda is to approve your consent agenda, which consists of Items 6 through 45, and can be taken in one motion.
Does anyone wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, 6 through 45? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes.
All opposed, say nay, and that motion carries. Thank you, MJ.
And Agenda 46 is to receive a presentation regarding the capital improvement program, and our super-smart, awesome Senior Director, John Penuelles, is going to present.
Thank you, MJ. Appreciate that. Hopefully, I don't let you down right now. The, yes, good morning, Chairwoman March and Members of the Commission, John Penuelles, for the record. I'd like to take a few minutes today to talk to you about our capital improvement plan, how it comes to be, how it's implemented over the year, and how it's funded. But first, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about our RTC department that is critical in the development of that plan, our Streets and Highways Department. They work not only with your Public Works people very closely, but many others, and they bring that forward every, every year. So, these are the five core functions of our folks at the Streets and Highways Department. The first, well, again, I just want to emphasize that, you know, none of these functions are done in a vacuum. They work very, very closely, not only with your Public Works people, but also your planning folks, private industry, contractors, the consulting community, the utilities, really any group that has an interest in the roadway and trail systems that are under the control of your agencies. As we were just talking about, the first box on that list, identify and address needs of vulnerable users. We work very, very closely, again, with all the stakeholders to make sure that all of our projects are, to absolutely the greatest extent possible, are removing the barriers that are out there to mobility and accessibility. That is really job one. Second is the capital improvement program, and we'll get into the details on that here in a second. The third, very important thing, is the integration of the regionally significant projects that are on the CIP with our long-term regional transportation plan. Now, this is done with the help of our recently promoted Andrew Kelman, so, and his team at the MPO. So, that's, that's great work. Now, the CIP programs local, the local fuel and sales tax funds, which we're going, like I said, we're going to go into the details on here in a minute, while the RTP is required to program the federal funds. And it's important to know that these two plans work together to program every available dollar that we can get our hands on, both federally and locally. So, the fourth box is another area where they work, the Streets and Highways Department works hand-in-hand with your Public Works and planning folks, again, along with private industry, to update and maintain the construction standards that are used throughout the valley, both for publicly-funded projects and privately-funded projects. That's the rulebook on how things are built out there. And the fifth and final function there is to maintain the regional coordination map that helps facilitate the conversations between all the roadway stakeholders to plan the delivery of projects so as to minimize the impacts to the traveling public and, most importantly, to make work zones as safe as possible. So, again, none of these functions occur in a vacuum. They all require intense collaboration with your agencies and private industry. So, back to the CIP, we're going to dig into that a little bit. There are really two components to it. The first is actually putting it together. To do this, the Streets and Highways Department works with Mr. Trosdahl's team, our CFO, to figure out how much money will be available each year for programming, how many dollars are available for projects, in other words. And again, this is over the 10-year planning horizon. Next, they calculate the portion of the available money using a formula that is based both, that is based both on population and assessed property value, and we'll get into the details of that later, a little later, too. Third, they collect the list of the potential projects from your Public Works directors and their teams. All the projects are then combined into a single plan and compared to the available funds for each year in that 10-year plan. Because the plan is fiscally constrained by the funding model that, again, we get from our finance department, the agencies have to work together to program and prioritize those projects in such a way as to make sure there's enough money in each of the, each of those planning years to get what needs to be done, done. So, the next, that usually takes a few meetings. There's some, there's some give and take. And when the process is done, it goes to your executive advisory committee, which is made up of your Public Works directors and planning directors. They take a final look and then forward it to you with a recommendation for approval, and that was approved for fiscal year '22 at your last meeting. So, once it's approved and we're ready to roll, that's where your Public Works teams, you know, really take over, and they're in charge of bringing the projects home for the project delivery phase. The role of Streets and Highways then shifts to the focusing, to focusing on amending the CIP pretty much every month. It's a living document at the request of the agencies to address changing priorities, which we know happen. So, there's a lot of flexibility to move things around as necessary. They also create and process the interlocal contracts. Of course, this is very important because this carves out the pots of money that are used for the design and the construction of the project. So, without the interlocal contracts and our agreements between one another, we can't get access to that money that's programmed. The Streets and Highways also has a high-level oversight over the design and the construction phases, primarily to make sure the conditions of approval are meant relative to ITS infrastructure and our transit facilities. ITS infrastructure, the communication infrastructure that keeps our traffic signals talking to one another. And then, finally, they have the very, very important role of paying the bills. Streets and Highways, along with our finance department, pay the invoices as they come in from the agencies for reimbursement of the project expenses. So, that's Streets and Highways 101, and I can tell you that they are absolutely eight of the most critical people that we have in this organization, and the collaboration and the teamwork that they have with your agencies and the community is just phenomenal. So, they do a wonderful So they do a wonderful job for us. So getting into the details here of the fiscal year 22 plan, again, this is the 10-year planning horizon, and the funds are distributed using a formula that we call POPVAL. And it's basically the percentages, you take the percentages of the population of each agency and the percentage of assessed property value for each agency, combine those and compare them to the county as a whole. And this chart represents the percentages that were distributed in this plan. Now, again, these percentages are then applied to that magic number that we get from Mark for the money that's actually available for projects. So next slide. Okay. Yeah, so the 10-year programmed look, this is, this is the entire program. $2.2 billion, over $2.2 billion are programmed over that 10-year period. Now, this includes both fuel and sales tax. And so that, you know, that's, that's a good plan. That's, I think, would be the envy of pretty much any MPO in the country. The breakdown of that 2.2 billion, obviously, the lion's share of that is fuel tax, about 13, I'm sorry, 313 million. The balance, about 17 million is, is the sales tax. So drilling in on fiscal year 22, you can see this is what's programmed in that first year, $330 million. So that is distributed through the agencies, as you can see here. Oh, there we go. Yeah, fiscal year 22. Thank you. So yes, 330 million in that very first year, and you can see the distribution for each of your agencies. Then, next one. So where are we now? This, the light blue numbers here represent the 261 active projects, if you add all those up. The red lines, before I go on, it's important to know that of those 261, 155 are in design and 106 are in some stage of construction, one or another. They've actually come for construction dollars. So that 155 in design is important because that tells us that we have projects on the shelves and that pipeline is continuing to flow. And we have spent to date, through the lives of those 261 projects, over a half a billion dollars. So, you know, the money's hitting the street and it's set up where the money will continue to hit the street. So that's very good. So the red bars here represent the programmed amounts for this fiscal year, FY22, and there are 145 of those. And then finally, the purple bars represent the projects over the life of the plan, and there are an additional 475, bringing the total to 881. And these projects are either underway now or will be delivered, and will be delivered soon, here within the next handful of months, or they are programmed to be delivered at the, by the end of fiscal year 2031. So again, that's, that is a very robust plan by anybody's definition. So final slide. Thank you. And this is the breakdown of those dollars, again, over the life of the, of the plan in each of these very important categories. Obviously, the lion's share of the money goes to infrastructure, I'm sorry, maintenance of the infrastructure, the existing infrastructure. However, almost 18% of the plan, 309 million, is programmed for safety improvements, again, to vulnerable users, including pedestrians and bikes, that type of thing. So those are the five, I'm sorry, the four, the four main categories. Now, no project is devoted just to one thing. The maintenance projects will include upgrading handicap ramps, that kind of thing. So we went through and we looked at the main purpose of each project and put them into each category. And that is the end of my remarks, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, JP. Are there any comments or questions?
You're welcome.
For the chairwoman.
Thanks. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. A couple of questions. What is being done and planning for the sunset of the fuel taxes? Are we aggressively doing that? Do you have a committee that's working on that?
We've had conversations already when we were briefing the legislature, for example, that this is something that we're going to have to come back. I think it's part of the study that we will be involved with Endot and other stakeholders. I think there's 30 folks, Christina, that are on that committee, where we're going to be looking for a long-term, a sustainable transportation funding. So it is, it is on our radar.
Okay. So I mean, they have to meet, obviously. The, what are we doing about the infrastructure, the Biden administration and infrastructure money? Are we in line for any of that, or does that go through the state and Endot only? Or do we get an opportunity there, a sizable amount that's on the table?
Well, I think what Christina mentioned earlier, I think we are all, we are all watching because there is the, the jobs plan, I think now it's a different name, there's the Invest Act, just what they're appropriating, and I think there'll be additional funding through appropriations. But at this point, we're waiting for the folks back Washington DC to come to the, a conclusion of what that looks like.
And do we know what we would be doing with that in reference to our capital projects? Is that add-in, or is that maybe just for future planning? Or does that allow us now to be something more that's on the table?
Yeah, it could allow us to flex that funding. We have things that are identified with local dollars now, and that could be flexed to, to federal dollars and then the cap, then the, the local money could be used elsewhere. So it, it helps, obviously.
So you'll report on that when you get it back?
Yeah, and just to be really clear, I mean, we can then move projects forward. That 155 projects that are in design, you know, maybe those could come out a little faster.
And I think too, Mayor, it's, it's good to note that it'll be dependent on how much is formula-driven, where as an agency, how much we'll get just by way of the form that's established through the Federal Transit Administration, for example, or how much will be available through a competitive grant process.
Okay, and one last one, if I may, Madam Chair. Where's poor little Loughlin? Do they get a slice, or they part of?
They get a slice. They're a part of Clark County's allocation. Yes.
And not, I mean, because I saw Boulder City is there. I could do more, but hopefully get on your knees. But Loughlin is part of that, because I knew that roadway down, we worked on that.
Correct. Yeah, that's under, under Clark County's jurisdiction.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Loughlin occasionally wants to be incorporated, but can't ever get it done. Two question for you. With regards to the surface transportation reauthorization, does that play into this also, or is that really more state roads?
Yeah, come on, JP.
Do you want me to? That, that's the state side of the House.
F W A.
Right.
Okay. And then if you could go back to your slide of sort of the, two slides back of projects that are in planning versus active.
That one?
I'm just trying to make sure I understand, obviously, we have these 10-year capital projections, and my perception is that some of the organizations on this board are better at actually executing on their plans than others. So how do you account for, how do you account for that in terms of projecting out how resources are going to be spent? It's easy to put a project with a broad name on a plan, it's harder to actually get it done.
It is. Last year, fiscal year 21, the agency has set a record for the amount of dollars spent in a fiscal year. And the money that's coming out was $230 million, I believe, which shattered the previous record of like 217. So they are absolutely working at capacity. And those, the percentages of the dollars spent in each jurisdiction was proportional to the amount of dollars that they had programmed. So when it comes to actually taking the dollars out, the, all the agencies are, that, that line is parallel for, for each one of them. So I think they are basically at capacity as far as the internal resources that they have to get the projects out. But again, the 230-odd million dollars in a year coming out in real projects is a phenomenal number.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just a, just a comment. One unspoken, one unspoken resource that we have are the public, the Public Works directors in the different agencies, you know, North Las Vegas, County, Henderson. And the public should know that these, these professionals, they're engineers, they work together very well, and they, they work very well towards seamlessly. They work in a collegial, very much a collegial-type environment in which they, they cooperate and coordinate between the different agencies. Because of course, like, for instance, floodwater that starts from rain that lands in North Las Vegas or in County will wash into Las Vegas and vice versa, right? The directors work very well together, and a lot of these, a lot of these coordinations and expenditures that are made are overseen by these departments, working with the RTC, of course. And I think one of these days, we're going to have to have a nice presentation, I think, by RTC with the different directors to explain how these are coordinated. And I think not only members of this panel, but members of the, the public would be very, they'd be very, they'd be nicely surprised to see how well government works for them to solve these issues.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do I need to make a motion to approve this report, or do we just?
Just a presentation.
Just a presentation. Okay. MJ.
Okay, thank you. The next item is to receive a report from Chief Strategy Policy Marketing Officer, Angela Castro, on the 2021 legislative session.
Thank you, MJ. Chairwoman March and members of the board, I'm happy to report that we had a very successful session. We want to personally thank you for your leadership and guidance throughout the session. And we also wanted to extend a big thank you to your Government Affairs staff and teams. With their help, we were really able to understand various positions and impacts on bills, and also we were able to successfully navigate this session, given the pandemic. If you recall our presentation in October 2020, we had three priorities. The first priority was definitely microtransit and being able to amend that legislation. The second priority was to monitor and react to bill draft requests and legislation. And the third priority was to communicate our transportation funding and planning challenges. So in priority number one, we spent a lot of time and focused attention on amending NRS 277A and 377A. This bill now authorizes the RTC to provide on-demand microtransit service. A very big thank you to the Southern Nevada Forum and to members of our track committee who testified in support of this legislation. Because of SB 362, we will now be able to better meet the changing mobility needs and demands of our customers and provide more equitable and accessible transit service. Our next priority was to monitor and react to legislation. The team monitored 1,100 bill draft requests and tracked almost 200 measures and provided support testimony for several important bills. And I'll just recap five of the major bills. The first two bills, we worked very closely with the Nevada Department of Transportation that Christina had mentioned. Assembly Bill 54 was to establish a traffic safety advisory committee, and this committee, as Christina mentioned previously, will definitely study issues and take a regional approach in and around traffic safety. And the RTC does have a seat at the table. The next bill is Assembly Bill 413, and we also had a conversation about this, on looking at long-term, it's the establishment of a long-term transportation funding working group. And what this bill does, it establishes a working group to study long-term transportation funding in Nevada. The working group will study the solvency of the state highway fund and examine issues including sustainability, transportation equity, and land use. The working group has been established, and Endot is taking the lead on this, and the RTC is a voting member. Chairwoman March, Mayor Goodman, we had a lot of conversations in and around electric vehicles and the long-term sustainability and contributing to our roadway funding. And so this is the committee where we anticipate a lot of the dialogue and conversation to come from and recommendations. Director Swallow has a lead on this committee, and we will be sure to report back as we continue to make progress over the next 18 months. The next bill is Assembly Bill 343. This bill was, while we did, it was an unexpected bill, it was a big win for the RTC. The bill's sponsor was Assemblywoman Claire Thomas. She introduced a bill that focused on walking audits. The bill initially required county health districts to conduct tri-annual walking audits in urbanized areas. However, in reviewing the bill, we quickly realized that there was an opportunity to be more efficient and align the legislation with our ongoing efforts to conduct walking audits and promote walkability and pedestrian safety from a regional perspective. In addition to her accepting our amendments, we also had the opportunity to include language that now authorizes the RTC to submit a bill draft request each legislative session. The RTC's ability to independently request a bill draft request will provide us with greater flexibility to pursue our own legislative initiatives in the future and definitely respond to a fluid legislative environment. The next two bills is Assembly Bill 445, which focuses on grant modernization, and we definitely testified in support of this bill, which establishes the Governor's Office of Federal Resources. We talked about federal grants earlier and, you know, in our statewide efforts. So as you know, we've made a lot of progress in this area, and we have seen great success as we work with the local governments to secure grants. This bill will create more, will streamline, I'm sorry, the processes and coordinate grant efforts from a statewide perspective. The last bill we testified in support of is Senate Bill 285, which was championed by Vice Chair Jones and the cycling community, which will strengthen the complete streets program and help ensure that cyclists, pedestrians, and all road users have safer facilities to use. Our other priority was, you know, was definitely to communicate our transportation funding and planning challenges. We spent the entire legislative session communicating our challenges to key stakeholders and the need for data from a, from transportation network companies for planning purposes. I want to definitely extend a big thank you to the Growth and Infrastructure Committee Chairs, Senator Dallas Harris and Assemblywoman Danielle Monroe Moreno. MJ and I had several conversations with them throughout this session. They gave us a lot of their time, really asking very good questions about our long-term transportation funding challenges. They recognize that the grant money that's coming in from the state, I mean, from the federal government is, is, you know, it's not a permanent fix to our long-term solution. Because of them and their help, and I know I've called Commissioner Segerblum and Commissioner Jones several times to place some calls into legislators, we were able to successfully negotiate outside of legislation, a data partnership agreement with the transportation network companies. It was a collaborative effort from both local and state leaders in helping us ensure that we can start to now collect anonymized and aggregated data from transportation network companies moving forward. So that was also another big win for us. This was just a snapshot of the team's work. We have a detailed report that outlines the bills that we tracked and potential impacts that we can share with you and your teams. I would also like to take time to recognize and thank our legislative team for all their hard work this session. It was definitely difficult and different, but we pivoted, we got creative, and we became pros at understanding the legislative environment in the virtual world. Now that the legislative session is done, our work is not done. We will be scheduling regular meetings with legislators and stakeholders and continue to advance our agency's goals, build relationships with key lawmakers, and with your help, start to lay the groundwork for a successful 2023 session. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Angela. Questions or comments? That was a great presentation.
I just want to say thank you to, to our amazing team for, for all they did over the last legislative session. Having spoken with a couple of the legislative leaders, I know they really appreciated the efforts you guys made up there, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to follow up and say I didn't ever get a trip to Carson City. I know the big thing of the past years was the whole RTC board would go to Carson City and have a great dinner down in Minden, so hopefully we can do that in two years.
Great. It's on my list.
We could invite them in here.
And thank you, Chairwoman, for your leadership and support during the legislative session. It meant a lot.
Thank you. Thank you. Great work. So proud of this department. If there's no other questions or comments, we'll go ahead and move on. If there's no other questions or comments, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item.
Great. So, there are no legal matters to discuss this month, so move on to the last agenda item, which is to conduct your final citizens' participation period.
Thank you. This is the second time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the board now is your opportunity. Please come forward to the microphone to provide your comments and state your name for the record. Do we have any comments, and do we have any letters that were received? Emails?
Chairwoman March, this is Mayor Dubois for the record. We did receive one public comment via email from Stephanie Versnik, and we'll be adding it to the written record.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to the RTC board this time? Seeing no one, this meeting is adjourned.